All right, now try to, Tony, can you hear us?
Excuse me?
I can hear you.
Can you hear us? Do you not?
I can. This is the one.
Tony's muted, he just said yes.
I can hear you.
Thank you, sorry for the technical delay. Welcome to the Town of Tustin Town Board Hearing. We thank you for your attendance. The purpose of hearing is for the board to hear comment on uses for their properties at 93 Main Street, New York Bank, 210 Bridge Street, occurring town hall. The format for the evening will be the speakers from the sign-in sheet will take it in the order of signing in. If anybody hasn't signed in, they're welcome to. Zoom participants will take any access to be used. Raise hand function to be recognized as the clerk. Then we'll go back to public comments from the floor that those who did not sign in and wish to comment. We'll follow back to Zoom for the participants there that have not spoken. Each participant will have three minutes and only one opportunity to speak. Each person may only speak for the allotted time and others' times will not be allotted to another person to speak for them. If someone does not wish to speak, they may still submit written comment to the board. And that's in fairness, so that I don't have one person who wants to speak for eight people and take 24 minutes. So, that being said, I will open the floor to public comment. Crystal, do you have a sign in here?
Mike Powell.
Early attendee, early attendee, just the one. Or something else. What I'm about to say to the board, it comes no surprise that I've already sent some correspondence out when I opened it up tonight, so that the general public can hear. I believe we have a unique opportunity right here to create a town hall that the town of Tustin needs. But it's not going to be here in this antiquated building. It's not going to be in that way-too-small bank building down on Main Street. What we need is a brand-new town hall, which would be energy-efficient, would be practical, and functional. How do you pay for it? That's always the question. Pay for it by either selling or leasing this building, selling or leasing the bank building, selling or leasing any other property that the town may own, like that former barn down on the flats, which has now been abolished. You can put enough money together to make the project. These buildings we're talking about, this one on Bridge Street, the one on Main Street, are incredibly valuable real estate. They're incredibly valuable to the town in terms of bringing people into town, in terms of creating businesses and creating jobs. Having the town hall sitting on them is really not an efficient use of that space. Town hall does not have to be in the downtown business district. It can be anywhere in the town. It could be in lava, it could be in Beaver Brook. It could be anywhere. It doesn't have to be right here. And if you remove town hall from here on Bridge Street and don't put it onto Main Street, you will help solve a never-ending problem of parking that frees up a certain amount of space for more cars, more visitors, more businesses. I thank you for your time, and those who like both.
Thank you.
Sue Powell.
I'd first like to know, who is going to make the decision what happens to this building?
That would be a town board. And this, we're not going to get into a question and answer, but it is a very good question. I would like to answer another question we'll answer later on. And I can be corrected by counsel. The decision would be to the town board. Depending on what that decision would be, may be subject to permission of referendum.
May I ask another question or not? I didn't know it was not question time. Oh. Why isn't it going to be referendum from the start?
The board has certain obligations and duties. Some of those can be checked by a referendum, such as a unanimous referendum. The board made a decision, the people have the opportunity to put it through a referendum. That's the easiest answer to that.
Well, I'm in favor of keeping this building for town use, whether you move your offices, that's up to you guys. But I would... This building is used for many other things than just to handle offices. And, you know, where would we have the town meetings? But then also, community events, such as practice and other... dinner for the volunteers and other things. I know sports that are held here. It's just the whole variety of uses to this building. And the town has put a lot of money into this building and in parking. So, my opinion, keep this building, demolish the thing, and make it a parking lot.
Thank you.
I'm not speaking to counsel. It's not working?
No.
We can't hear.
We have no sound.
No sound.
Regarding the bank building downtown, I'm envisioning a time 10 or 20 years from now when somebody asks you or me why parking in town is such a mess. And either...
You had it, but now we've lost it.
And the parking wasn't improved. If the bank building gets sold, then does parking in town get improved at all? I don't think so. I know that's an expensive piece of... The per cost of each parking space would be high then. But the town, I don't think it's likely to ever have another opportunity to get parking, more parking downtown at any cost. Thanks.
Thank you.
Iris. Good evening. First, I would like to state that I am very much in favor of keeping this building. An enormous amount of money has been put into this building. It has been upgraded. It has multiple functions on multiple levels. So, I am affirm, yes, to this building. But I do have a couple of questions. I wonder, and I did not know that we couldn't ask questions, so I will present the questions and however they get answered, whether it's during meeting or whatever. Question one. Has the town obtained appraisals for both buildings?
Good question.
Question two. Has the town signed any sort of letter of intent or any promise to sell this building to 10 Bridge Street? Question three. What kind of cost would be required to renovate the bank building? And since so much cost has been put in, so much money has been put into this building, is that worth it? And four. Has a civil engineer given his or her professional opinion on whether a second floor could be added to that bank building? Thank you.
Brandy Marolla.
As the town board entertains the idea of selling this historic town hall, I thought we should look closely at all the financial as well as the human costs ceasing, of ceasing many of the community services provided in this town hall basement. The downstairs community hall. All town board meetings, lighting board meetings, joint board of appeals meetings, and some committee meetings take place here. The idea of holding meetings at the fire hall seems impractical if and when the fire department gets an emergency call during a meeting. Having government officials and residents in their way is the last thing they need. Not to mention that our two firehouses are working out on a merger, leaving the future of the Nashville Firehouse uncertain. Court sessions, where would they be relocated? Careful consideration needs to be given to town court procedures. The town's polling location. Where would we all vote? The library is considerably smaller than the town hall basement and can't accommodate endemic social distancing in their tight space. Emergency warming station for extreme weather. After learning firsthand about our residents' needs during an emergency weather event in May 2018, we purchased and installed a generator sufficient to keep people warm and offer electrical charging for their phones and medical devices when there are power outages. We set up cots for those in need, right here. Distributed water and offered dry ice we bagged from the National Guard. Where would residents find a safe refuge and a place to plug in their oxygen tanks in the future? Nissan Wheels program. Food preparation takes place in the kitchen. This important service feed our seniors who are in need of food, including our disabled residents. Should we be responsible for ending that program? The community hall generates revenue for the town. This space has been rented for bridal and baby showers, receptions, flea markets, karate classes for kids, DMV, and as the town's, the theater's dressing room slash green room for the last 33 years. Volunteer appreciation events and Tuscan Repair Cafe have all taken place with this space, serving residents with these inclusive community efforts. The Tuscan Theater has been rented to the DVA for 33 years. They pay half of the water bill for the building, as well as $100 a month, plus electric year-round. They invested $300,000 in the theater in 1990. They own two furnaces in the theater, all the seats, lighting, sound equipment, and stage curtains. The DVAA has wanted to get a separate water bill meter for years, but they were told they can't do that. You can't carve out the theater from the building if we were to sell the building. How do we compensate the DVAA for substantial investments they've made over those 33 years? We really want to put an end to the DVAA theater productions and their big Eddie films, that's all. If another theater group purchased the building, the DVA would most likely no longer have the use of the theater. We owe them careful consideration after decades of theatrical productions, concerts, lectures, films offered to the public in the theater. Their investment is a big concern. Recent financial investments in town hall, as of over the last several years, our taxpayer dollars have paid for new efficient boiler, a new generator, new LED lighting in the whole building, replacing all the antiquated fluorescent bulbs that were in here, new efficient air source heat pumps, a stairwell lift to the upstairs offices, a newly renovated ADA compliant bathroom, water-saving toilets, and offhand sets of three of the bathrooms in the building, and a new rule. Main Street Bank Building has 2,667 square feet. Town Hall has 5,460 square feet, not including the theater. A little more than double the space of the bank. Town Hall basement provides space for many of the community service needs by our town. We had built a second story on the bank building that would be a huge tax burden on our residents and wouldn't have it for years and years to come. In the meantime, there's no sustainable plan to accommodate the many services for the public. The taxpayers have invested in this town hall building since 1925. And as we face huge water and sewer infrastructure expenses today, I find abandoning investments irresponsibly, irresponsible, and basically foolish.
Brandy, you're at 435.
Okay, just one last one. I'm so sorry, Ben. Town Hall historic relevance. In 1925, the Hartford Fire Department voted to build a firehouse community hall through saving subscription, fundraising, and door-to-door canvas. The goals for the structure were met and plans for a two-story building were submitted. Shouldn't we honor the history of the building and reconfigure offices if that's necessary before we abandon the whole building? Moving forward, the bank could be demolished, almost finished, making room for ADA-compliant parking and public bathrooms, or the building could be divided so the town has space in the rear of the building, including a vault for docked storage, while creating a rental retail space in the front of the building for monthly income for the town. Or we could simply sell the bank building, retaining the parking lot. If and when we do, we'll need architectural rendering that should be an RFP for architectural services made for the public. Think of all the towns' needs, and please listen to the residents who will be funding these changes. Thank you.
Star.
Well, it's made amply clear that we're not allowed to ask questions of the board at these public hearings, so I was just going to go into it and say, I'm giving my input, which is, I can't understand why, with all the evidence of things that would be wrong, with giving up this building and trying to shoehorn it into this tiny thing on Main Street where there's already an excruciatingly lack of parking, I can't even believe that the board is considering to do that kind of a swap-a-lu. The town hall is by far one of the focal points in the town. It has all the town functions, the meetings. It has events that bring money in. It has a large enough space for people to come in for educational programs. It has social value and things like the celebration of the yearly get-together of the Tuscan Historical Society, so that people can come in here. I remember in the past that they had some of the Eagle Fest presentations down here. Just don't have this kind of size anyplace else in town, except possibly the Union. And the suggestion that we should just go out and find an area that's big enough to build, you know, an Empire State Building town hall, someplace other than here, where are you going to find that? Where does the money come at prices of just land? Forget about the buildings, but just the land. Where is that money coming from? And I'm sorry, you could rent this building as a, I don't know, 16-story condominium, and you would still not accrue enough money to replace and rebuild with what we've got right here now. So, I just, I just can't understand that. Also, the fact that this building allows for people to participate in their government functions. You don't have lines at the door. You don't have people having to come in remotely. They can come in here in a large group and listen to what's going on within the government. The Ken's, was it Ken or no? So, Manning's presentation of the zoning rewrite. You were here. You could see what was going on. You could ask him questions. You're not going to find that in the bank building. And of course, the most ridiculous thing is the parking. That's already, for 13 or nine years, people have been complaining about the lack of parking on Main Street and the problems with trucks pulling out and no place to stay where you can have a handicap access to something. This is just going to explode that exponentially. So, just in closing, I feel that it would be extremely irresponsible and wasteful of this board to say, okay, we're going to put the building out for sale before we have any place to replace it. We're going to go out and just rebuild or bump up the second story of the bank building at what God knows what cost that would be if we were allowed to do it. You've got to use your hands, people. This is taking away a lot of services for people, especially for the emergency. When we have these weather events, nobody has electricity. That's gone. You don't have another place like this that can provide that now. You can't even think about getting rid of this building until you have something viable, not planned, but in place. Thank you.
Jim, sorry. Dorian Edkraus.
One would be just one of those.
Edkraus.
I'm against moving the Tuscan Town Hall where it's located to the former Wayne Bank Building. I believe it will be an unnecessary tax burden to read the taxpayers of the town of Tustin. At first, I thought it was a bad decision, but the more I thought about it, it seemed to make sense. After I heard of a potential buyer for the bank property, I thought it was brilliant. That way, we essentially got the parking lot for free. There's too much activity that goes on at the town hall that could not be handled at its new location. Meeting, emergency shelter flood of 2008, and everything else that Brandy Marolla said in her letter to the other. It would increase parking on Main Street instead of helping. You say, how is that? There's plenty of parking now where we are, here. Easy access for all citizens to conduct business, meeting, projects, et cetera. If the town hall is moved to the bank building, seniors and many other folks will be expected to park in the parking lot, walk down the steep slope to conduct their business, and then walk back up. It's not going to happen. If you need... We won't be parking on the street. If you need more office space in the town hall now, I'm sure a person with creativity and innovation could draw up plans to accomplish that. You have a theater, large space and basement, and a large kitchen that may or not be used enough to warrant keepers. The bank building could probably be sold for commercial development. We made a good use for the park service to recreate the information center that they had at one time, along with restrooms for weary travelers and business. Please don't coordinate with this bad decision just to create more office space. Thank you.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure. You get your own time anyway.
I just want to say, maybe now would be the perfect time to approach Wayne Memorial Hospital on the medical center down on the flats. You know, now that they would know it wouldn't be another hospital or another doctor coming in from out of the area. Mr. Ford.
Anna. Anna.
We are having a challenge reading someone's handwriting. It might be Gerald or Jerrilyn Lanker.
Yeah, no comment.
No comment, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Did anybody else here in person have a comment? Oh, Ariel. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Ariel Schomburg, I'm the executive director of the Delaware Valley Arts Alliance, and just wanted to represent DVAA in these hearings. We all know the arts have been and will continue to be a cornerstone for the ongoing revitalization in Arrowsburg as a community and as a destination. The Tuscan Theater is a core platform for DVAA and our role in supporting local and regional talent, as well as bringing sought-after artists to our region. Our full 32, now going on 33 years of stewardship has included major investments, as been noted, on our part, including capital renovations, technical improvements, extending access to various performing arts companies and festivals that do not have their own venue. And we are in an exciting juncture with more programming and planning than ever before. That will include live performances, opportunities to engage our community's youth, and continue to support the new surge of residents and talented artists in our community. We look forward to working with the town board and the community to ensure that this town of our community continues to enrich the lives of all who live and visit in Tustin. Thank you.
That's everybody, I have one sign-in sheet.
Okay, we're going to move to Zoom, and you can use the raise hand function. The clerk will acknowledge you, and then I'll mute you.
Tony Ritter.
Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yes.
Okay, great. Board members. Why would the town board authorize the bank building to be used as a town hall and add to the congestion of Main Street besides the various questions that I raised on my March 8th email? Numerous deliveries are made throughout the day where delivery vehicles stand for more than half an hour. Truppers park in opposite directions. Vehicles double park, especially on weekends. The town has no enforcement, nor wants to budget for any law enforcement, especially on weekends. Opening and/or events at the DVAA at times add two to three times to existing traffic when they occur. So, why choose this location, making parking difficult for visitors and tourists? The Rasmussen Building has been purchased. After touring the interior and speaking with the new owners, they plan to have a brewery and restaurant downstairs, retail stores on the ground level, luxury apartments on the upper level. The building is 30,000 square feet. And with the amount of commercial establishments planned, why would the town want to relocate directly across the street from this building, thus adding to already bad traffic, flow, and minimal parking? Ingress and egress from and to the Main Street parking lot is narrow and steep, with cars parking adjoining the post office building diagonally on one side and a steep drop-off on the other side, thus adding to more congestion and possibly accidents. And knowing these facts, the town wants to move the town hall, which has ample parking on Bridge Street, to a building on Main Street which has less wear fee for office space and various municipal meetings and courts, as well as adding to congestion on weekends and holidays from April through October. Where does the town of Tustin plan to have their town board meetings, planning board meetings, zoning board meetings, justice court meetings, meetings for energy, zoning rewrite, et cetera, community events such as Repair Cafe, karate receptions, et cetera, public overflow meetings for the Upper Delaware Council, National Park Service, Boy Scouts, et cetera? Where town board members do you intend to have your future meetings? Or maybe you won't have future meetings. There is no meeting space in the bank building compared to where we presently have, where you're sitting right now. In fact, the interior square footage is much less than the existing town hall building on Bridge Street. In addition, the existing town hall has over $100,000 worth of repairs and renovations via grants and/or taxpayers' funds, namely a new roof, lighting, ADA-compliant bathrooms, a generator for public warming center in the last four years. Lastly, this is the most important thing I've got to say. Lastly, now that the board has heard from the people who live and pay taxes in this town, I think it's time for each board member to explain to the public what's on their minds and how they feel about this proposal. As public servants, you were elected to preserve the health, safety, and welfare of this town. And I think that I'd like to hear from you, but I think that the whole, the public would like to hear from you. Thank you.
Somehow we mute ourselves. John, your turn.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. I'm not going to give all the details again because I think everyone that spoke tonight has really hit them hard, and I am in agreement 100%. I would just like to add that I would really love to see our time and resources being put forth to focus on the parking issue and the water and sewer issue that I believe is now decades old. There should be no other talk of anything else, in my opinion, at this point, that we should be investing in buildings and this and that, getting the parking situation, which was perfect, and acquiring that parking lot. Thank you, I think that was a great move. You have a little building there. Let's do something little with it, or take some of it down, leave bathrooms, rent it. I get the why not rental because you're now just adding to the parking again. So then make it bathrooms and make some more space for parking and use it for what it was intended to be purchased for. And really, your time, board members, like, I don't want to have to see you doing this when we have other things that need that attention. So please, let's focus on what is needed in this town right now, which is fixing the water and sewer problem and dealing with the parking. Thank you.
I have no one else.
We'll move back to the floor. Is there anybody in attendance?
I have Dawn.
Okay.
Am I on? Is it my turn?
Yes, Dawn.
Okay, so, sorry, I'm doing this from a car, so it may be a little bumpy. I agree with everything that has been said this evening, especially with Brandy. Tony, you made a lot of good points. We don't have to rehash everything that the Town Hall stands for and what it's been used for. I don't want to see this Town Hall sold. If we have the bank building, I agree, we needed that parking that's in the back of the bank building. But if we keep the building, that's fine. We could have it for other office space or, like Jen said, take down part of that building, leave bathrooms and more parking there. But there's no way we should get rid of the Town Hall. And I, too, would like to see transparency with our leadership and really what you have in mind. Was this in mind from the time you purchased the bank building? Or was it not? Is it just something that came up? I think the people of the town need to know, but I haven't spoken to anybody that agrees with selling the Town Hall. And what would the library do then for parking? That's the majority of the parking there and for the town. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Can you state your name, please?
Naomi Hollick. I live on the flats. I am just totally bewildered by this whole issue, and I agree that if the board is seriously considering doing what seems to be, on the surface, an expensive and unnecessary move, that the board member, each board member should explain where they stand before any decision is made, because I, for one, I can't fathom why you're trying to do this. Thank you.
I have Cass Collins.
I'm going to unmute.
Yep, you're good.
Okay, yeah, I just, I'd just like to ditto what Tony and Brandy said and most every, everyone else who's commented tonight. I think the Town Hall, as it stands, is a wonderful resource for the town. If you need extra office space, you know, maybe we need to rent some offices from the union. I don't know. They have office space, might be cheaper than building a whole new building. And I appreciate the parking garage on Main Street, or parking area, rather, on Main Street. That was a wise move, but that building is never going to replace the building that we have and that we've used so well over the years. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I don't see anybody else online.
Okay, we'll come back to Zoom. We'll return back to the floor. Are there people that wish to comment that have not signed up, Bernie?
I'd like to see the Town Hall moved down to the bank with an addition on the back level with the parking lot for handicapped access. This building for the Town Hall offices is not really handicapped access. I've gone up those stairs twice and crackered. It's no fun. This building's a hundred years old, and this one turned into a money pit that already has. All the money was spent just to make it stand here. I'd like to see the Town Hall moved down to the bank with an addition on the back. You could have your meeting hall behind the bank almost as big as this with a second floor underneath it, where there's more office space and storage. Solve the problem for me. Wouldn't affect parking on Main. Go past here during the week. There's two cars here, maybe three. So it's not going to have your parking problem on Main Street. So I'd like to see you go down to the bank.
Any others on the floor? Yes, sir.
Hi, everyone. Jake Johnson. Partner at Russ, we're contemplating opening the brewery in town. We were just discussing the parking issue. We tend to do it more often than not. In prior meetings, we both kind of come to this conclusion that perhaps there is not as big of a parking problem as we may think there is, but there is misuse of the space available for parking, maybe some signage issues. I drove into town yesterday morning. I was yesterday morning, Saturday morning. Main Street was loaded. The lot behind the bank was empty. People were double parked, almost seeming like they were turning around, but the lot behind the bank was empty. It just seems like there could just be a signage issue. Is it actually a parking issue? It may be that we need to expand that lot. We talked before about the potential of adding another thirty to forty percent parking back there. How do you do that? How do you pay for that? Whether the Town Hall moves out of this building, into the bank building on Main, or even secures a line of credit to purchase a new building, leasing these spaces and maintaining ownership over them creates revenue that a bank would look at or any sort of loaning officer as extra revenue to cover the cost of that. We're talking about how to pay for a new building. There you go. What could you get for this building? What could you get for the bank building to cover a monthly, call it mortgage, on building a new building? I think those are things that we should all look at and consider. But we continue to talk about this parking thing. I think there are much simpler solutions than tearing down buildings on Main Street when there's, there's property behind that building that's not being used for parking. You know, as far as ADA parking, make some spots on Main Street. If we have more parking behind the bank, less people need to park on Main Street, and if their ADA is owned anywhere or marked, that's where they'll be. If we can, you know, I don't know the exact number, but if you can fit a hundred spots behind the bank, then is there really a parking problem in town? I know we keep talking about it, but every time I drive by, it's not full. So, and again, this lot's not full. I understand big A weekends and, you know, the best weekends, of course, but that's a problem we all expect. The every, every weekend situation, let's just utilize what we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the floor? You could already hear Irish.
Irish. First time speaker. I'm Barry Becker, and basically, a lot of what's been said is all valid. You've got, no matter what the option, whether it's build new, build on top of the bank, work here, or try and get the medical facility down there. All of them are good. All of them offer great options. This does have a historical factor into town being and maintaining here, and it's very multifaceted in its uses, which everybody is familiar with, including having the theater here. So a lot of money's been invested in this building. No matter where we go, there's going to be massive monies needed to make things happen. Here, we've started the process with roof generator. There's a lot of extra retrofitting that needs to be done, whatever. Also, here, does every office have to be here? Can the second floor or various offices be shifted and maybe take over the bank area? So you kind of split up Town Hall by offices. And utilizing that also then could be expanded if they have a bathroom or something down there and extra parking, however, there's, and also just having an overseeing engineering and architectural layout of what would it take to expand it up into the attic of this building? Add on to the back, the kitchen needs to be really redone, which I've worked in many a time. And, you know, so it's trying to redo this new in three other places, maintain and update and do all the cosmetics of this building needs and maintain the historic balance to it. So it's a lot on your plate and to what goes out. Where to get the monies, you know, whether there's grants, where you get any kind of meetings of contracting vendors that will participate and do a fifty-fifty or whatever, bonds, added to taxes, whatever. There's so many different ways to go about it. But just there's lots of food for thought that's on the plate, so let's start. Thank you.
Very. I've already said once, Iris, you've got something we want to add?
Is there anybody else?
I mean, it's up to you. As you offered. After Iris, we've got a couple of, I've got one from.
So I wanted to just augment what I had said before. Speaking to many people in town by phone, by email, by texting, and I would say that there was only one or maybe two people that were on the fence, so to speak. Everyone else that I spoke to or that called me or emailed or texted me said, why would we want to sell this building? This has everything that we need to do for this building. So it's not just me that's saying this. This is as a representative of sorts of people in town that contacted me and told me. That's one. The other thing is Tony made a very valid point, I believe, in terms, many, but it's important for us as town folk here and on Zoom to know what your thoughts are. Because if your thoughts are, well, I don't even want to give with it. What are your thoughts? And this would certainly be a good opportunity to be able to share that. Lastly, for those of us who did not know about not asking questions, those questions that I brought in, brought up before, I would like to know how those questions will be answered.
I'll answer your questions. As a matter of fact, I'll probably answer in the closing statement.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Hold on, that's for me later. I just got up.
That's okay. We won't hold you.
I guess when I think about moving Town Hall from here to the bank, I think the bank provides us an opportunity to generate more community on Main Street and kind of support the, it's a kind of word, the vibe on Main Street by allowing us a chance to have some revenue for the town generated by people moving into the bank, creating some businesses. You know, in the bank, there's that large vault area. So how do we navigate that? You know, do you tear the vault out, or if the cool shop moves in there or something? Is that a cool part of that? Is this an opportunity to just generate some income for the bank, generate more attraction to Main Street and people coming into this town and spending money?
Thank you. Well, before we go back to Zoom, Greg, would you mind reading?
No, we have, we have three emails that came in that should be on the public record. The first one is from Steven. I got one. One from Steven Stewart that says, hello, I want to seize this opportunity to participate in the public comments regarding use of the current Town Hall, Ninety-three Main Street, and make an additional proposal. I'm not able to be on Zoom nor at the meeting as I will be driving back to my daughter's home at the time of the hearing. Regarding Ninety-three Main, that building should be available for a business to lease. This keeps the property on the tax rolls, preserves the handicap parking spaces for the downtown business district, and offers an opportunity for a commercial shop on Main Street. Good commerce provides a more stable downtown. As for the current Town Hall, Brandy Marolla's My View, published in the current edition of The River Reporter, says it all, and then he provides the link, but I believe we've covered most of those points. Keeping the current Town Hall where it offers potential for funding opportunities to further improve the building through the upcoming CFA grant program, can the roof of this building with its east and west facing play a major role in creating a community distributed generation project with solar? The downtown businesses would be ideal off-takers for the electric generation. NYSERDA is looking for projects like this, and thanks to the work of the Tuscan Energy Committee, Tuscan is in a really good space to leverage the work that has been accomplished. In considering a grant proposal, are there additional ways to improve the energy performance of the current building? New York State is looking for projects to support that will help state, help the state meet its climate goals. That being the case, why not take a look at decarbonizing the town's highway garage? The radiant floor is heated with oil. The boiler is probably approaching end of life. Cold climate air to water heat pumps can provide the appropriate temperatures to warm the building. I realize that this is not the either building relative to the public hearing, but it is a project that could be coupled with a grant application for a solar CDG and other energy improvements to the building. So that is from Steven Stewart. Our next one is from Susan Sullivan, and she says, Dear Supervisor Johnston and Town Board, or Johnson and Town Board members, in addition to the many advantages that others have pointed out for leaving Town Hall where it is on Bridge Street, such as more space, recent renovations, more, many community events and services for all ages that require a lot of space, especially providing shelter emergencies, new generator, kitchen facilities, handicapped accessible bathrooms, and more. I would add that the Main Street location would distance the public from town officials and discourage visiting, asking questions, and attending public hearings. Parking on Main Street is difficult now, and it is not going to get any better. It would be very hard for seniors or anyone with disabilities to access town services. As a taxpayer, I don't want to hear about renovating another building. So I would suggest the Main Street property be subdivided with the town retaining parking lot and the building being sold. Thank you for taking my comment, Susan Sullivan. And then I got an email today, which I assume is okay to read. That comes from Catherine Lewis, who says she will not be able to attend this evening's meeting. So she is sending this email to me to express her concern. I very much oppose relocating the Hamlet offices from Bridge Street to Main. We presently have a functioning space, much of it recently renovated and available parking. Moving to another space that would require expensive renovations and reduce parking, especially in light of the various businesses planned in the Rasmussen space across the street, would also contribute to greater congestion. Were the town to rent that, that space, this would Were the town to rent that space, this would create additional revenue. And given the interest in Narrowsburg, especially the downtown real estate, one can reasonably assume we can lease quickly. Lastly, and although this is unrelated, people have recently seen their water bills practically double. Though it seems necessary to deal with eroding infrastructure, it is nonetheless an unwelcoming climate in which to propose something of this magnitude. Relocating these offices is not only unnecessary, I see no real advantage to the members of our community. Thank you for your time. Sincerely, Catherine Lewis. And those are the three that we got.
We have one more.
Another email? And the last one is from Linda Sloka, and it says, hello to all on the Town Board. I am extremely concerned about the potential plans to sell or demolish the Tustin Town Hall and/or the possibility of moving town hall to the old bank building on Main Street. At this time, we have a fully functional town hall building, which has served the town in many ways for close to 100 years. That building is part of our municipal and cultural history. If the town is actually considering moving the town to the, how to the bank building, they need to understand that there is not enough square feet to meet the current needs of all the town offices as well as the large community hall. The board's, the Town Board's responsibility is to meet the needs of the town and work for the benefit of its citizens for today and also decades in the future. There is a new roof, a new generator, and a new ADA compliant restroom facility that have been installed to improve the town hall building. The bank building cannot provide enough space for an emergency shelter or a warming station, and we are all aware of how many record-breaking weather events we've had in recent years. Where are all the town meetings going to be held? The bank building cannot provide enough space for the meetings, which often draw large crowds. The town hall has a huge municipal parking lot that can serve for election days, town meetings, and community events held in the large community hall. There is also the very important fact that the Delaware Valley Arts Alliance leases the Tustin Theater for their many theatrical, musical, and cultural events. What would happen to the theater? The town could utilize a local development corporation, LVC, that would manage/lease the bank building and find the best possible use for it that would benefit our community now and into the future. With retail space in demand, the income generated would be significant. The income generated by the bank building would go towards supporting community events like Riverfast, Feed Fest, Deepwater Literary Festival, the Big Eddie Film Festival, youth activities, and beautification. Furthermore, there are individuals who have expressed serious interest in purchasing the bank building on Main Street. Any funds generated from the sale could go towards any necessary repairs or upgrades to our historical town hall. The town needs to take responsibility for the town hall and the bank building and view them as real estate assets, not as liabilities. The town of Tustin needs to work with and for the citizens and the community to make the best possible use of these invaluable real estate assets. Sincerely, Linda Sloka, Narrowsburg, New York.
Do you have any others on Zoom?
Colin Peters did have his hand raised, and I took it down. Colin or Linda, did you have any comments to make? I think that is enough.
Prior to opening the floor to the board, I will say a couple of things in closing. I'd like to thank the people for their comments. The board will take these into consideration and find a path forward. Personally, I believe many valid points have been raised, assist the board in its decisions. Many issues to consider, logistics on how to do it, including funding. The board will discuss these issues and find the best way forward and the best way forward under the advice of councils, use of public monies as regulated by law, as well as selling municipal properties. For the questions that were raised earlier, no, appraisals have not been done for both buildings. But in previous meetings, it has been discussed that if the town were to try to sell anything, we would require appraisals in order to fulfill our obligations, fiduciary obligations to the town and making sure that what we do is in the best interest of the town. Has there ever been a promise to sell 210 Bridge Street? No, there has never been a promise to sell 210 Bridge Street. However, we have, or I have, on behalf of the town, solicited to people to find out what we could do with this building. Would we be able to do something with the building that would allow the DVAA to stay here? Allow the theater to operate 365 days a year? Allow it to be used in a manner that would still allow the DVAA to be here and bring more people in town? I have met with the DVAA. We will keep them appraised wherever we go. Because for me, the DVAA is an anchor in this town. Any decisions that the board makes, I will be fully in favor of making sure that the DVAA is protected. I remember when the only thing that was on Main Street was a barber shop, a newspaper, a diner, a funeral home, and a DVAA. Not many people here remember that because they haven't been here long, but I do. So we don't throw our anchors overboard when we don't have to. Thank you. She said I'm old. And I am old because I've got 28 years of government experience here in the town. So if people think that something's trying to be done without actually thinking about it, I just look back to how long I have been here and how long I have served the community in Tustin and how I believe the best thing needs to be done for this town. The cost to renovate the bank building? No, we have no cost to renovate the bank building. The only thing we've talked about was trying to move the offices down there. There would be, we only purchased the bank building for $140,000. We put $20,000 into the monies that we put the public hearing for. So we have not gone to renovate the building because we did not have monies to do that. A civil engineer's opinion on the second floor, we never had talked about putting a second floor on top of the bank. It was always if we were to do something at the bank, it would be to go out the back and put a second story on top of that. We haven't been that far. That's why the public hearing is here. That's why the board wanted to solicit from the people some ideas, and I think we've got plenty of ideas to go forward. Some of them are better ideas than others. Some are very realistic to what our issues are here. And I think the board has a lot of, a lot of good information to move forward with. To say that any of the board members agree or disagree with this at this point, I think would be unjustly premature. Because we haven't done that far. There's a lot of things that need to be done in order to move forward with something such as selling. And that has also been discussed at meetings here with council, who tends to keep us on pretty straight and net. Comments by the board?
I just want to say kind of thankful I am that everybody comes out because again, and I keep saying over and over and over, when you come and you listen and you learn, this is how government works well and how government is successful, because we need to hear from you. So thank you all for coming.
Yeah, I just like to second that. I mean, the idea that the board has some secret agenda or that we've made up our minds couldn't be farther from the truth. That's why we've opened up this meeting for a public, public comment. But I, you know, I was on the board, I think, for two minutes when this issue came up. And I said then, and I'll say now, it's a new piece of the puzzle and we need to think out loud. And that's what this process is. We're thinking out loud about a resource that we didn't have last year. And I don't want to get into too much, but I mean, I also think that some of our duty is to think not about what we have, not about what we've already spent, but what this town will need in the year 2050. You know, with some kid who isn't even born yet would be sitting at this desk, you know? And will this building need those needs in 2050? That's something we have to think about. Not just the sort of, I really, I'm touched by the affection that people hold for it. I'm reminded as a Met fan of how people felt when they were going to tear down Shea. The attitude was like, yeah, it's a dump, but it's not worth it.
With a leaky dome.
But I mean, there is, there's a radio infection for the dome, and I think that's, that's important to hear and not recertify.
Well, you know, I've been here all my life, too. Like Ben said, I can remember when Main Street was packed and busy. Dizzier than it actually is now. You know, I can remember it when it's been dead, too. It's just, you know, we needed, the parking lot was the main reason for the purchase of that property. And so it was, couldn't ever go anywhere. Right? Can it be changed? Yeah, sure. The building, I don't, you know, it was just an idea that was tossed around. Nothing was written in stone. We just talked about things. And sometimes it gets out of control because people run with hearsay, and then, you know, it turns into a big mess. But no, we're here to do what town wants to do. You know, it's not up to just the five of us.
I'll jump in and just say, as evidently the newest and youngest member in the town. That's true. That is true. That is true. I stand corrected. The notion that it's irresponsible to be asking these questions surprises me because if, I think it would be irresponsible not to be asking these questions. We have, we have an asset that we fully need to understand the consequence of. Do we need more information before we can responsibly make that choice? I think so. I, I myself am very sentimental about this building, and I see the virtues of it. But as Jane said, I think the process of hearing how people feel and also fully mining the potential of both scenarios before making a reactionary or uninformed decision is critical. And so to go into it, assuming that the questions have a foregone outcome, is not how I am experiencing this. This is not how I have felt once during any of the discussion. And so please know that everyone's feelings and ideas and concerns are so very important in the process of making an informed decision that is best for today, that honors what has happened before today, and as Kevin said, for the future. So thank you all.
No other comment? We're closed public hearing? I'm sorry? Spring cleanup is?
May 14th from night two. Everyone should have received fire. If you don't live in town, did not receive fire, we have many extras up in the office.
Okay.
Saturday.
Normally, at this point, we would open up our workshop meeting, but we have devoted the time for that. So we'll have no workshop meeting tonight, and we will reconvene here next Tuesday for our regular town board meeting.
At 6:30.
At 6:30.
Christian said that the flyer announcing that there is meetings and things was not sent outside of town. It was only sent to the people. It was sent to Tustin residents, which goes to our, there's three routes for Tustin. However, some are in Shaktin and some are in Yulin. So those couple extras will do receive them.
Okay, I'm just asking because I got one.
You're Tustin. No, you're, you're considered Tustin.
And my neighbor down the road, which is on Hopland Road, didn't get it. And so people wanted to.
Okay, so if they didn't get it, then I'm not sure what the error was. That's through the mailing. And if anyone, you know, did not receive it, please send them to office because I do have a lot of copies extra. Thank you.